Good evening, everyone. All right, it's so nice to see everyone here today. The Clayton County Board of Commissioners meeting is now called to order. The date is April 1st, 2025, and the time is 6 o'clock PM. We will now have roll call from our district commissioners and the chair. District 1.
Here.
District 2.
Here.
District 3.
Present.
And District 4.
Present.
All right. Next, we will have our invocation and our pledge of allegiance to the flag. Tonight that we have for our invocation Reverend Pastor Reynolds from Christian Fellowship Church. Will you please come up?
Good evening.
Please stand.
Let us bow. Eternal Father, once again, we come with thanksgiving in our hearts. We've come with praise in our hearts as well. Your goodness, your grace, your mercy, and your love has been abundant. And Father, we do come with our requests, knowing that you are the one that can supply all of our needs. We pray for the citizens and the residents and the businesses and all of those who cross the roads and highways of Clayton County. We pray that our efforts will be pleasing and abiding in your sight. We pray for your arms to be around us and that we treat each other with dignity and respect and love, and we join our hands together in worshiping and honoring your goodness, your grace, and your mercy. Be with us in all of what we do. Lead us and guide us. Give us strength where we are weak. Give us direction when we don't know our way. Give us your patience and understanding as we seek to find how you would have us to travel. Let us be all of what you called us to be. Let us do all of what you called us to do. Let us say all of what you called us to say. And we will forever give you the praise, glory, and honor in the master's name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Courtney, before we adopt the agenda, I just want to take a personal point of privilege. We did have a birthday of one of our board members, District 1 Commissioner Elena Reeves. So let's wish her a happy birthday, guys. Also, if we have any elected officials, I do see Councilwoman Kirby of Lovejoy, please stand and be recognized. And if there are any other public officials that are here tonight, we have Riverdale as well. Let's give them a round of applause and thank you so much for coming out tonight. Oh, Tax Commissioner. Okay. All right, we also have our Tax Commissioner, Ms. Danielle.
Good evening, everyone. Commissioners, this portion of the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have any amendments during this time?
Yes, I would like to move items 7 and 15 to the regular agenda. Board members, are there any other amendments? I mean, are there any moving of any items to the regular agenda?
Yes, I'd like to move item 13 to the regular agenda.
So we have items 7, 13, and 15. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
All right. At this time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
All right, a second.
Second.
All right, any discussion at this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next, we will have presentations and proclamations. The first one will be the Veteran of the Month Senior Services Veteran Advisory Board. The second will be the Clayton County celebrates the 2025 National Library Week given by the Chairwoman. The third one will be the proclamation Clayton County celebrates the Moro Civic Women's Group that will be also given by the Chairwoman as well. Fourth one will be the proclamation celebrates the Youth Commission Class of 2024-2025. That is from Commissioner Gail Hambrick. Number five will be the proclamation for the Clayton County celebrates Ms. Daniella Taiwo for the annual, excuse me, Georgia Youth Leadership Awards Commissioner Tashae Allen. And number six will be the Clayton County Police Department's Fifth Certificate of Accreditation from Kalia. That will be from Police Chief Kevin Roberts.
United States Army Veteran Specialist E4 Stephanie McRae. Stephanie McRae served in the United States Army from 2000 to 2004. She graduated at the top of her class from the United States Army Chemical School in 2001 and became the first black woman to operate and maintain the M93A1 FOX, a German reconnaissance vehicle in South Korea. In 2004, she was honorably discharged and received several commendations, including the Army Achievement Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Korean Defense Service Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Army Service, Good Conduct, and Overseas Service Ribbons. Stephanie founded a youth wellness organization under Michelle Obama's Let's Move Initiative, which earned the 2015 President's Challenge Bronze Award and Fitness Award. She is a former elementary school teacher and behavior help therapist and is currently enrolled in Georgia State University's graduate program in the College of Arts and Sciences. She is a member of the Student Veterans of America. Stephanie is an ambassador for Women's Veteran Social Justice, volunteers with The Mission Continues, and shares the healing power of music with fellow veterans through Alchemy Sky's Foundation Veterans Music Project. She is a mother of one daughter and two sons, and they reside in Clayton County with their service dog, a standard poodle, Aubrey. In her leisure time, Stephanie enjoys gardening and baking pies.
Board members, will you all please come down so we can take pictures? Is Stephanie here tonight?
Yes.
All right, come on up, please. Also, any family members, please come up to be photographed as well?
Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors National Library Week, April 6th through 12th, 2025. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions, striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Libraries are an essential public good and fundamental institutions in democratic societies, working to improve society, protect the rights of education and literacy, and promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. They play a pivotal role in economic development by providing resources and support for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses, thus contributing to local prosperity and growth. And whereas every library, whether public, school, academic, or special, has something unique to offer its community. Libraries are treasure institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both physical and digital resources for present and future generations. And whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are as diverse as the populations they serve. In times of economic instability, communities turn to and depend on their libraries and librarians. And whereas librarians are the guardians of free access to information and resources, libraries are for everyone. Everywhere, libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now, therefore I, Chairwoman Dr. Alika Anderson Henry, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim National Library Week, April 6th through 12th, 2025. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library and celebrate the adventure and opportunities they unlock for us every day. Ready, set, library. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of Clayton County, Georgia to be affixed this first day of April in the year 2025. Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors National Library Week, Moro Civic Women's Club. Whereas National Library Week is a time to celebrate the vital role libraries play in our communities, fostering a love of reading, promoting education, and providing invaluable resources to all individuals. And whereas over 50 years ago, a group of visionary women, the Moro Junior Women's Club, made a decision that would shape the future of our community. And whereas on May 1st, 1962, the Moro Junior Women's Club, now known as the Moro Civic Women's Club, part of the General Federation of Women's Clubs, was established and organized within the 4th District, now the 6th District with a dedication to service, advocacy, and community growth. And whereas the Moro Civic Women's Club has been an active force in our community for over five decades, accomplishing numerous goals and improvements, including the establishment of the Moro branch of the Clayton County Library in 1975. And whereas the club, through its efforts, recognized the growing need for a local library in the expanding Moro area and advocated for its creation, ensuring that this invaluable resource was available to the residents for education, information, and enrichment. And whereas the Moro Civic Women's Club continues to support the library with book donations, organizing story hours, facilitating summer programs, and fulfilling various needs as they arise, ensuring the library remains a thriving center of learning and community connection. And whereas the Moro branch of the Clayton County Library has evolved over the years, starting in a small space across from Moro Senior High School, moving to Lake Harbin Plaza, and now residing on Maddox Road, continuing to serve the community's education and informational needs. Now, therefore I, Chairwoman Dr. Alika Anderson Henry, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor National Library Week. Let it be known that we celebrate in recognition of the importance of libraries in our community and the outstanding efforts of the Moro Civic Women's Club in making our local library the resource it is today. We salute the contributions of all those who have worked to build and support our libraries, and we encourage all citizens to visit their libraries, explore the resources available, and engage in lifelong learning. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of Clayton County, Georgia to be affixed this first day of April in the year 2025.
The Youth Commission?
Also, while we're transitioning, Scott forgot to tell everyone about the bookmobile. Was it here or stop?
Clayton County recognizes the Youth Commission Class of 2024-2025. Whereas the Clayton County Youth Commission Class of 2024-2025 has demonstrated they are ready to become engaged citizens and future leaders. The Office of Youth Services proudly took 16 youth commissioners to the Youth in Government Expo in St. Simes, Georgia, hosted by the Center for Civic Engagement. While there, our teens shined in various facets of immersive simulations of government agencies. This transformative experience allowed them to expand their knowledge of government operations, connect with like-minded peers, and prepare them for public service careers. And whereas during the event, several youth commissioners took on leadership roles. For the cybersecurity program, Jeremiah Jean Vier and Jeremy Stevens served as ambassadors. In the local government program, Kadatu Dialu served as the Emergency Services Director, and Andy Pham served as county chairman. The diplomacy program showcased their skills in international relations. Judah Wiley and Jerel Clark represented Jamaica. Autumn Thompson and Richard Williams represented Japan. Deborah Okaru represented Bolivia. Anaya Allen represented the Philippines and served as a committee chair. Morgan Baxter represented Sudan. Ariana Ahmad and Tanila Booker represented Haiti. Malia Harris represented Liberia. Aidan Brooks represented Denmark, and our very own Michaela Hodges presided over the hearings as Madam President. And whereas the youth commissioners' efforts were recognized during the awards ceremony with Jeremy Stevens receiving the Excellence in Decision-Making Award, Judah Wiley and Jerel Clark earning the Outstanding International Policy Award, and Judah Wiley receiving the prestigious Outstanding Diplomat Award. Clayton County recognizes the hard work and dedication of our Youth Services Department and celebrates the showmanship of the Youth Commission, delving into local government, national security, cybersecurity, and diplomacy pathways. Now, therefore I, Gail B. Hambrick, Commissioner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby pay tribute to the accomplishments of the Clayton County Youth Commission Class of 2024-2025. I encourage you to continue your journey of civic responsibility as you strive to become our future leaders. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of Clayton County, Georgia to be affixed this first day of April in the year 2025. Clayton County honors Daniella Taiwo, Georgia Youth Leadership Award recipient, 2025. Whereas the Georgia Youth Leadership Awards, GYLA, hosted by 21st century leaders, honor outstanding high school students across Georgia who exemplify academic excellence, leadership, and community service. And whereas Daniella Taiwo, a senior at Lovejoy High School, was selected as one of the top 21 high school leaders in Georgia for the 2025 GYLA, demonstrating exceptional character, vision, and dedication to positive change. And whereas, in addition to this prestigious honor, Daniella was also awarded a second-place $500 scholarship at the Be the Inspiration Gala held on March 15th, further recognizing her leadership and service. And whereas Daniella serves as an inspiration to her peers and a shining example of the extraordinary potential within Clayton County's youth. Now, therefore I, Commissioner Tashae Allen, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize and celebrate Daniella Taiwo for her achievements, leadership, and contributions to her community. We commend her for representing Clayton County with excellence and wish her continued success in all future endeavors. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of Clayton County, Georgia to be affixed this first day of April in the year 2025.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board.
They say you don't want to take a picture with us?
Who? I'm photo-ready, ma'am. There you go. But before we get to the photo, I just want to introduce the representative from our accrediting agency, Kalia, and he just wants to greet the board, Program Manager Vince DeRoe from Kalia.
Thank you, Chief. On behalf of the Commission of Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, Commission Chair Colonel Matthew Packard and the Executive Director Mr. W. Craig Hartley, Jr., I thank you for welcoming me to present the 2024 Accreditation Award to the Clayton County Police Department. Kalia was created in 1979 when founding organizations, the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, the National Sheriff's Association, and the Police Executive Research Forum, recognized the need within the law enforcement community to develop professional standards to enhance the delivery of police services to the citizens throughout the communities they serve. Kalia is the only internationally recognized public safety accrediting body in existence, serving the United States as well as Canada, Mexico, and Barbados. Since its inception, Kalia has accredited over 1,600 agencies under standards developed by many of the leading public safety practitioners of our time. Gaining internationally accredited status is a distinction held by very few as there are over 18,000 law enforcement agencies just in the United States alone. That equates to just below 5% of the agencies in the U.S. Currently, there are 50 agencies in Georgia internationally accredited in law enforcement. The goals of Kalia are to strengthen crime prevention and control capabilities, formalize essential management procedures, establish fair and non-discriminatory personnel practices, improve service delivery, solidify inter-agency cooperation and coordination, and increase community and staff confidence in the agency. Many agency heads are reluctant to have outsiders review their work and their administrative processes while detailing any deficiencies the agency may have. It involves risk. It also requires the department to be open to change in order to demonstrate that they work and conduct business in a way that meets contemporary law enforcement standards. Chief Roberts thinks otherwise and understands that Kalia accreditation minimizes his agency's exposure to liability, demonstrates accountability. exposure to liability, demonstrates accountability to the public, and guarantees professional management practices. In practical terms, the chief believes it confirms their commitment to excellence in law enforcement. Based on the goals and mission statement of Kalia, I can think of no better time to present this accreditation certificate to the agency than at a public meeting of the Board of Commissioners, where we can recognize the hard work the agency has committed toward accomplishing this goal. The certificate itself is simply a matted paper within a frame, but it has a much broader meaning. It clearly represents the agency's efforts to achieve accredited status, thereby demonstrating its willingness to change and to effectively address contemporary public safety concerns. It represents a commitment to doing the right thing, doing it the right way for the right reason. It represents adherence to a professional code. Lastly, it represents an ongoing dedication to ensuring the agency's resources are appropriately developed, effectively deployed, and constantly managed, all in the name of a safer county for citizens and visitors alike. During the past four years, Kalia staff have reviewed all of the agency's proof of compliance files. Then on March 11th through 13th, 2024, a professional assessor visited the Clayton County Police Department and reviewed the agency's activities, functional impacts, and management strategies. The assessor determined the agency's compliance with all applicable standards. He also noted the agency is committed to the intent of the Kalia process and accordingly exemplifies what accreditation represents. The assessor spoke with members of the community. He spoke with other thirty-five people, including agency members, an area pastor, an HOA president, and the chairman of this board. All the persons interviewed advised the Clayton County Police Department and its chief are very committed to serving their community with the highest level of professionalism, assuring the needs of their community are at the forefront. Specifically, Chief Roberts is a well-informed leader who guides an agency comprised of officers who are polite, caring, and serve with knowledge, compassion, and good intentions, exemplifying the motto "One Clayton," as they cooperate with other county, state, and federal agencies to serve their community. The assessor found the agency's personnel were proud to be members of the Clayton County Police Department and were reflective of professional attitude with a high sense of service to the community. At the commission meeting held in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, Kalia commissioners reviewed the assessor's report, concurred with their findings, and unanimously voted to reaccredit the agency. This is the police department's fifth award for law enforcement accreditation. Now, I'd like to invite forward Chief Roberts and Accreditation Manager Lieutenant Sean Hires to receive the Kalia accreditation certificate. Note that none of this work would be possible had it not been for the hard work performed by Chief Roberts, his command staff, and all members of the agency. And also, it would not be possible without the members up on the dais today. Without your backing, they cannot accomplish this. As I read this and they come up, I would like to turn away from you because it would not be possible as well without all the people standing behind me, members of your community that support their department.
I wasn't expecting all that. All I was gonna say was, now Commissioner Hamrick, it's picture time.
I'll try to speak last. Be hereby known that the Clayton County, Georgia Police Department, having fully demonstrated its voluntary commitment to law enforcement excellence by living up to a body of standards deemed essential to the protection of the life, health, and safety and rights of the citizens it serves, and having exemplified the best professional practices in the conduct of its responsibilities, is hereby, upon the recommendation of the members of the commission, accorded this certificate of accreditation, effective on the thirty-first day of July 2024, and is recognized as an accredited law enforcement agency for a period of four years.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the board with a total time of thirty minutes. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Good evening, everyone. Next, we're gonna finish up our agenda from last week. So, the first person who did not get a chance to speak was Ms. Aretha Ensley.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Aretha Ensley. I live in unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton. There is a focus group of connected citizens, concerned citizens, Carol Yancy, The Goodness, me, and fifteen other residents countywide who have pushed for independent ethics legislation for Clayton County, 2019 to present, that mandates that ethics officer and administrator are selected by the ethics board members, not elected officials and county staff. Madam Chair, why are you usurping the current ethics board's authority as mandated by states' ethics? From our legislation, from our understanding, these two positions must be advertised and posted. Has that happened? As of yet? Just wondering. Now, on January 21st, 2025, Ms. Carol Yancy submitted concerns to Clayton County Legislative Delegation regarding ethics board not being operational due to the ethics officer and administrator, and is out of compliance with the new independent ethics legislation and board of Clayton County. The BOC retrieved Mr. Orlando Gooden inquiry to the HR Director Pamela Ambles regarding ethics officer and administrator. March 4th, Ms. Yancy, Board of Commissioners, public comments regarding no ethics officer, Board of Commissioners, members, unresponsive as of this reading. March 9th, Ms. Yancy submitted follow-up email to all five Board of Commissioners members and eight of the nine Legislative Delegation members. BOC members, unresponsive. State Representative Scott and two of the three state senators all communicating regularly with Ms. Yancy from the ninth through the twenty-fifth, stating affixed to twenty-four ethics, 2024 ethics legislation to be completed as soon as possible. Per Ms. Yancy, her March 16th phone call with State Representative Sandra Scott advised Ms. Yancy that Commissioner Allen can vote on any part of the county's budget except the sheriff's salary. I, along with other District Three residents and residents countywide, understand that to mean that the sheriff's salary would be a separate line item for Commissioner Allen to abstain. And I would just like to say to my Commissioner Allen, I would love to thank you for being such a gentlewoman when asked to leave a meeting that I believe elected officials could attend. I admit that I did not vote for you because I didn't hear you speak at the candidates' forum, but if there is anything that you wish from this--
Thank you, Ms. Ensley. Your time is up. Thank you.
Do not hesitate to give me a call.
Your time is up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next will be Cornell Madison.
Good evening, everybody. See this right here? I hate to come up here and do this, but my name's Cornell Madison. I live in District Four. I just want to say congratulations to Chief Roberts as a former Assistant Chief of Police that Kalia is very, very hard to accomplish. With that said, I've asked for several open records because somebody decided to use my name and put my name and my email addresses into their open records request that you all have received, so we all know what it is. But my theory is, if there's a budget issue, why don't we do a forensic audit? It's cheaper to do a forensic audit than it is to raise all these taxpayers' mill rates on their residents and their homes and their businesses. It's cheaper just to do it and see where the money's gone. But let me help you as a trained investigator. You got employee's name, Jessica Candy, the sister of the sheriff. Her salary's seventy-three thousand. She made a hundred and five thousand last year. Rashawn Hardnett, she's a clerk, making less than deputies. It says sixty-seven thousand, nine fifty-five. She took home a hundred and forty-seven thousand. You got another clerk, what's her name? What's her name? I can't think. Keon Jackson, she makes fifty-eight thousand. She took home a hundred and thirteen thousand. You got a captain, which is his mother, making seventy-three thousand. She took home a hundred and eight thousand. You got a colonel, it says groomsmen, makes seventy-three thousand. He took home a hundred and thirty-one. The governor of Georgia makes one eighty-five. I am telling you right now, that is egregious, that is Rico Act, that is theft. It's called theft by conversion, just like I did my background checks on all you guys before I came here because I wanted to know who I'm speaking to. There's no disrespect to nobody, especially you, because I don't want you to think that I'm coming for you, because I'm not. But this is ridiculous. It has pay stubs, all that, and I can provide this to anybody in the county of Clayton. I was added to that because I moved back here. I used to be a police officer here in Jonesboro. Everybody's adding me to all their emails. I'm being blind copied. I'm being added to stuff. And the only person I can say that had the intestinal fortitude to stand up and say, "Hey, Sheriff, that budget's a little bit too much," was the chairwoman. Everybody come here, they dog her out, and they say, "Oh, she says this, she says that." Well, let me tell you something. Don't blame her for what happened in the past, just like I'm not blaming you guys for what happened in your past. Just like the sheriff should be blaming the previous sheriff for what happened in his tenure. You're in control now. You're in charge. Do what you have to do and take control of that agency and cut off the rap cars, all the celebrities, all the dances and balls and stuff. That money can pay these deputies who have to work on their off days and risk their life to provide for their family. I think that's egregious. It's embarrassing. And if anybody wants to find me, I'll continue to be the Wester Board. My name's Cornell Madison, and I live in Clayton County.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. Next is Rhonda Ashley.
Rhonda Ashley, Clayton County, District Three, Hampton. Good evening, Madam Chairman, Commissioner Allen, Board of Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening, and my purpose for doing so is, again, homeownership property taxes. I am encouraged by those of you who previously expressed that raising the homestead exemption from ten thousand to fifteen thousand was a good idea, but you couldn't vote for it because it's not the right time. As you move forward to pursue economic development, work on growing and maintaining the county's general fund balance, and other initiatives for the betterment of the county, I would also like the board to make it a priority to pass a resolution to be placed on the ballot for the 2026 legislative session to remedy the impact of the falsely inflated property tax appraisals and assessments for the homestead taxpayers not covered in Resolution 2025-37 passed by the board in February. I must emphasize that we are not talking about the normal rising costs that go along with homeownership as your property increases or appreciates in value. We are talking about the rising property taxes due to a market falsely inflated through homes purchased well above market value by predatory investors resulting in inflated appraisals and assessments. During the 3/20 tax webinar, excuse me, hosted by the Tax Commissioner's Officer, Office, the chief appraiser stated that the appraised value of the home doesn't matter because it's the Board of Commissioners that sets the millage rate, which determines the amount of tax assessed. That suggests that the two are totally unrelated, and that's just not true. It's misleading at best, and quite honestly, it's a bit insulting. Everything starts with the appraised value. The total of the values of all the homes in the county minus the exemptions, credits, is what rolls up to determine the tax digest, which is simply the total or base amount of property tax revenue available to the county for your budget. If the appraised values are out of line, whether they are too high or too low, you're definitely going to find yourself adjusting the millage rate upward or downward to ensure that you have adequate property tax revenue to meet your budgetary needs. During the March 4th board meeting, Attorney Reed offered feedback regarding millage rates. He stated that the board rolled back the millage rate from 2019 to 2023 to adjust for the market value of the homes. That's not only what I've stated today, it's what I've stated both times that I've come before you. Basically, these appraised values were so adversely inflated by these predatory investor purchases that the county had property tax revenue flowing in like a river. So, yes, you roll back the millage rate because the higher appraisals and assessments in and of themselves allowed you--
Thank you, Ms. Ashley. Your time is up. Thank you. Next is Mr. David Hamrick.
Madam Clerk, Commissioners, David Hamrick, District Three. I'm going to be following the guidelines set from Chairwoman Anderson Henry that we should promote the facts, not the falsehoods or fallacies, as we strive to move Clayton County forward. To correct statements that have been made here by others, the state does not have a $16 billion revenue surplus, as many have falsely stated. At a town hall meeting attended by Gail Davenport, Yasmin Neal, and Elena Parent, they responded to my statement, which questioned the accuracy of that. Ms. Parent, in complete quickness and response, reaffirmed that, using round numbers, five-point billion dollars has got to be held in a reserve, leaving less than eleven billion. This reserve is something what we just discussed a few weeks ago at our meeting, but it forced it was millions versus billions. With that done, the state tax rate was cut last year. Thank you, Governor Kemp. Even with production, projections of 6.25% drop in revenue, but only realized a 2.4% drop was realized due to Georgia wage and salary increase compared to 2.6 nationally. Here in Georgia, it was 3.1%. This is per state economist Robert Bushman. Following Governor's lead, HB 11 just passed. It reduces the amount of its tax rate now again from 5.39% to 5.19% beginning on or after January 1st, 2025. The goal is to reduce this by 10% or .10% annually until our tax rate is 4.99%. HB 112 also gives money back to our taxpayers. Since it now passed, I urge everyone, please file your taxes. You have the ability and possibility of receiving $250 for single, 375 married head of household, $500 married filing jointly. So, please, everybody, make sure you get your taxes filed. Please don't leave this money on the table. Please don't throw it away. Saying that, looking at line item seven on a budget amendment, I'd like to make a proposition on this. I have never spent money to make money. I have always invested money because I expect a return on my money. Looking at this, there's no guidelines. There's no direction, no nothing. Here's my proposition. Earmark part of this money to fulfill the jail operations. Let's hire twenty part-time probationary employees with the operation. They go straight into the jail. into the jail. Sheriff Allen says he needs something, if we just spend money without getting anything, we're wasting time, we're wasting money, and we haven't solved the problem. So let's earmark some of this fourteen million with guidelines. Bring in those twenty people, let them work, they can work up to twenty-five hours per week.
Mr. Hamrick, your time is up, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a great evening.
Next will be Mr. Mickey Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Clayton County, Rex, Georgia. Madam Chair, members of the board, it looks like everybody's talking about money today. Well, let me say this about what I heard about the general fund that y'all were going to vote on in reducing the reserve from four to six months to two to three months reserve, making that the law. Well, let me tell you, that's not right, and that's not good business. Money managers suggest that people have at least six to eight months reserve for emergency and rainy day funds. You must live within your means, and not rob us, the citizens of Clayton County, of our means to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. Next I have Clinton Covington. Clinton Covington. One more time, Clinton Covington. Next will be Alison Herron. She's with CCWA, so she's probably not here. Kimberly Fernandez. Kimberly Fernandez. Georgia Ann Clark. Georgia Ann Clark. And then I have Kim Hankin. Kim Hankin. That concludes last week, we will move on to this week, and the next person is Dr. Henry Anderson.
Henry Anderson, District Three constituent and resident, Unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. Good evening, Chairwoman, Mrs. Dr. Lea Anderson-Henry, Vice Chairwoman in District One, Commissioner Ms. Atlanta Reason, happy birthday to you. District Three Commissioner, Mrs. Tashae Allen, District Two Commissioner, Ms. Gail Hamburg, and District Four Commissioner, Mr. Demont Davis. In continuing with my Clayton County Board of Commissioners' performance appraisal assessment evaluation standards benchmarks, metrics, and criteria that I will be using in determining your overall numerical grade rating score, I will now start at your evaluation benchmarks, metrics, and criteria number five, which is your leadership competency, capabilities, abilities, know-how, skills, and talents. As our Clayton County Board of Commissioners to strongly motivate, energize, galvanize, drive, inspire, and continue to bring out the very best in terms of overall work performance of our Chief Operating and Operations Officer, Chief Dietrich Stanford, our Deputy Chief Operating and Operations Officer, Chief Landry Murkison, all of Clayton County governmental department divisions, agencies, and authorities chiefs, deputy chiefs, assistant chiefs, directors, deputy directors, assistant directors, managers, supervisors, and the entire Clayton County frontline ranking staff, work labor force, and governmental employee staff and personnel. Evaluation benchmarks, metrics, and criteria number six, which is, our Clayton County Board of Commissioners Chairwoman, Mrs. Alika Anderson-Henry's leadership competency, capabilities, abilities, know-how, skills, and talent in leading our four district commissioners on the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, our Chief Operating and Operations Officer, our Deputy Chief Operating and Operations Officer, the Clayton County governmental department, divisions, agencies, and authorities chiefs, deputy chiefs, assistant chiefs, directors, deputy directors, assistant directors, managers, supervisors, and the entire Clayton County frontline ranking file work labor force and governmental employee staffs and personnel, whether or not our Madam Chairwoman has the majority vote in support of our four district commissioners, in at least a three-two vote majority, a four-one vote supermajority, or a five-o unanimous vote with all five of you, our Clayton County Board of Commissioners, being in absolute total full, complete agreement, unity, and in one accord with each other, or no support from our four district commissioners, with opposition votes of either two, three, or one-four against on agenda matters, our Madam Chairwoman submits at our regular business meetings. I will continue with your evaluation benchmarks, metrics, and criteria that would be used in your Clayton County citizens' evaluation process during the public commenting section of the next Clayton County Board of Commissioners' regular business meeting two weeks from now, on Tuesday, April the fifteenth, 2025, at six o'clock PM. To all, continue to have a very productive, great, engaging, orderly, excellent, exceptional, and outstanding rest of your Clayton County Board of Commissioners' regular business meeting on this evening, Tuesday, April the first, 2025. Good day.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Next is Rhonda Ashley. Next is Atanya Jean Funny.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Atanya Jean Funny, Unincorporated Clayton County, District Three. Chairwoman, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Um, I wear a few hats for Clayton County. Today I come as a voice for District Three, an advocate, and a cheerleader for the growth and prosperity of our county. Sometimes they say you have to look at the history to make sure you don't repeat it. On May 2023, Sheriff Allen requested three point six million dollars to hire thirty-three new deputies. The proposal was granted by the Board of Commissioners. On April 2024, he asked for and received fourteen point eight million dollars to cover salaries and overtime. I do want to add that this was a right around election time, where both he and his wife, Commissioner Allen, were both running. Somehow, the sheriff's department ran out of money two months later, and in June of 2024, he came back before the board and received an additional one point six million dollars to pay deputies and address understaffing issues. At that time, the sheriff told you all and the public that he was fully staffed, but not properly staffed. My question is, who determines the staffing? So now we are in 2025, and again, he is asking for fourteen point seven million dollars. So we are in this era of transparency. The budget needs to be transparent. So I want to ask that the sheriff's department be transparent. And I would like to ask you all to request an audit. This will help us to figure out what is going on. In any company where you have one department that continues to go over budget, year after year, something else would be done besides continually giving them a blank check. So I would ask, if this money is truly needed, that it is paid based on receipts submitted. After this, he's coming to you all for next year for eighty million dollars, which will raise our taxes. So I'm asking this board, this is nothing personal, but Clayton County, we have got to get it together, and being fiscally responsible is the first start. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Orlando Gooden.
Madam Clerk, Orlando Gooden, District Three. Initially, I hadn't intended to speak tonight, but one of the things I want to address is why is the agenda being produced so late? It used to be you could go on the computer and find the agenda on a Thursday or Friday. Now you have to wait till Monday. One of the things I want to address, the gentleman gave a great presentation, but there's a word called accountability, as well as transparency. So if you want to complain about, we need to do a forensic audit, maybe he doesn't know the five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars that this board approved and was not transparent about it. I've been attending board meetings for close to fifteen years. I've never heard a chair tell a present, presentate, someone doing a presentation, how much longer are you going to be? Don't say anything to the fire department, don't say anything to MARTA, the water authority, but when you have a backed-up jail, and it's also dependent on the defender, public defender showing up, he has to be funded. Otherwise, you will end up with more people being incarcerated without the proper representation. Yeah, it, it's funny, when you come here and you listen to people talk, the uninformed mind makes inaccurate accusations. If you want to talk about an audit, we need to audit you guys, okay? Because you've been coming up with a short budget for a long time and having to raise millage rate, wasting funds. It's not your money, it's our money. So if you want to audit the sheriff's department, fine. If you had been at the presentation on Saturday, you would not have any questions about his presentation or his budget, because he went into detail about what he's doing with the money. So for somebody to stand up and say, "Well, we have questions about what he's doing with the money," were you there? Because he explained it, but nobody asked you. Every time you turn around, you want to, "Well, we have to have accountability, we have to have transparency, we have to make sure that the money's being spent properly." And then you talk about, uh, it's so ridiculous, it's a long list, I can't even go through it, I have to pause for a second. All the money y'all waste, okay? You don't work for yourselves. I said this before, none of you elected yourselves, we elected you. So that means you're accountable to us.
Next is Jean Pierre Bourget.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Jean Pierre Bourget, I'm in District Four, and a member of the Clayton County Development Authority. So, as you all already know, I got my master's in economic development, so in service to the Clayton County community, I'll be coming here to put out information monthly to help us all better collaborate and better understand what's happening in economic development. Now, I know that you all know what it is, but I want to also ensure that our community also understands how it works. Why? Right now, it's go time for all of us in this county to start generating more revenue so that our homeowners don't have to continue picking up the bill. Now, how do we do this? Economic development. But what does this mean? Economic development is the practice of raising the collective quality of life of a community's citizens by generating economic activity that helps create jobs, pay for amenities, and support services that provide good living conditions in our community. Once again, it's, economic development is the practice of raising the collective quality of life of a community's citizens by generating economic activity that helps create jobs, pay for amenities, and support services that provide good living conditions in our community. But let's be clear, economic development isn't just about chasing big businesses or ribbon cuttings, it's about improving everyday life for the people who already live here. So when we talk about economic development opportunities and projects, we should be asking more than, how many jobs will it generate? Or, what's the total amount of investment? But instead, we should drill down and start asking, does this project address a critical need? Is it providing residents who live in the area with new housing types or food options? Is it preventing, permitting our young people with the ability to find good quality jobs without having to leave the county? Will it be accessible? Is this project going to be accessible for our seniors or differently-abled communities who don't have cars? Does it cause environmental harm or negative health impacts to our community? From housing and food security to jobs to transportation networks to environmental protection uh, in public health, economic development is so much more than, than the amount of investment and job counts. For that very reason, it is why I, as a member of the Development Authority, find it important to continue collaborating and communicating with our Board of Commissioners, as well as the Economic Development Office, because collectively, we are all responsible for helping to build and coordinate a local economy that supports and uplifts all Clayton County residents. Finally, I want to urge those who are here and watching to come to the Development Authority meeting every second Thursday at six PM. Our location changes, so pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have time for one more speaker.
Next is Duane Jones.
My name's Duane Jones, I'm from District One. What I brought before this, I lived on Grant Road in Ellenwood. They brought this before y'all before, about a truck repair uh, place with a parking lot, and they was going to be doing truck repairs and all, right there on Grant Road and Williamson Road. Y'all declined, we won, y'all, y'all turned it down. They, the man came back to y'all, wanted to put in a big roll-up fourteen-foot door. In order to put the door there, you'd have to have a building, so y'all turned it down. I don't know whether the address is on Williamson or Grant. They said it was on Grant, well, if it's on Grant, the entrance is on Williamson. So I don't know which one has the address. But uh, I have been run off the road just about in my truck, eighteen-wheelers coming from Walmart down Grant Road. They make that turn right there, that curve right there at the church. The truck stays on the road in his lane. Anybody, I was a truck driver, the tail end of that trailer comes all the way over into the other lane, on Goodman Lane. You can't have him big trucks going out back, forth, down through there. An old lady was pushing a shopping buggy with her groceries. She got run off into the, into the ditch with her shopping car, because there wasn't enough room for one of these trucks and her. We've got kids, you're going to be having a townhouse that's built on Williamson, they're already cutting the wood for it, and a data center. Now you're going to have these trucks going up and down that road, you're going to have more kids in that town, in them townhouses than what we've got now in the whole neighborhood. But I just, I can't see it. The, the trucks are coming out of Tanner Church, they're tearing down, they're running over your stop signs, they're running over your yield signs, they're knocking down speed limit signs. It's just not enough room for these trucks to get up and down that road with these youngins. We've got kids, a woman and her two children was walking up Grant Road going to Walmart from the housing area, they had to run over into the, into the man's yard there in order to get out of the way. That's, I, I love youngins, and I just can't see one of these youngins or somebody getting hit and possibly killed, I just can't. But that's what I had to bring up. I thank you for hearing me, y'all have a good evening.
Mr. Jones, I'm, I'm going to put you with Mr. Matarco, so we can talk about the, and CO, can you speak with him as, and Matarco is right there? I'll, um, you, you can go speak with him, if y'all can go to the back.
Well, now, they, they put a sign on that fence that says ELT, Truck Parking and Repairs.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That now completes public comment, and we will move on to the next section of our agenda, and that's the consent agenda.
May I have a motion to approve?
All right, can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
To adopt, I'm sorry.
A, a motion to approve?
I'm sorry, to approve, I always say accept. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? All right, can I get a second? I second it. All right, is there any discussion at this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Any abstention? The ayes have it, and the motion passed. The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next, we will look at item seven on the agenda.
Item seven, Budget Amendment 2-28 appropriates funds to the sheriff's office in the amount of $14,676,303 for salaries, overtime, personnel benefits, other contract service fees, and regular operating expenses.
All right. Board members, um, is there a, a motion at this time?
We discussing item seven?
Yes.
Oh, I had a few questions.
Can, so is there a motion at the time?
Motion. Can we have a motion for discussion?
For discussion?
Yes, if yes.
Motion for discussion.
Okay, all right.
Still need a second.
I would need a second. I mean, I, uh, you're making a motion to approve or a motion to the?
Motion for discussion.
Okay.
Well, can I, can I put a motion on the floor? And we can go into discussion?
Right.
All right. Um, I make, I would like to make a motion to amend the budget to provide the sheriff's office with a total of $7 million along with an audit. And so, with a forensic audit. And so that way, we can find out what's going on with the money at the jail and make sure that we go forth and feed, make sure that we feed the inmates and we take care of the day-to-day operations of what needs to be done. Can I get a second? Second? All right. All right, is there any discussion at this time?
There is.
Yes.
First of all, I'd like to know how you came up with that $7 million, $7 million mark.
What I would like, what, I spoke with, um, I spoke with Angela and I spoke with Stacy. And so, um, can you explain how that would take him, um, to, how that would take the sheriff, where he needs to go as far as the budget is concerned, and how we need to go from there? Angela?
The $7 million, um, the sheriff's office spends currently 5.71 million monthly, but finance is currently holding 1.6 million in invoices to at least a total of 7.3 million, 7.31 million that he would need as of today to get him through a month, plus the expenses, the invoices that are currently in finance.
So that would be, that number times, well, three minus what you're holding. Is that correct? Because we have three more months left in this fiscal year.
Right. Yes, well, only two, we are in April. Well, I guess you could say three, because we just started April, so April, May, and June.
April, May, and June.
Yes.
Okay. And, okay, and that's, that's a, that's a great idea. My other piece is with this, though, is to not disperse these funds, but to, um, make the sheriff begin to, in a sense, pay upon receipts. Um, what is he, what is he needed for? I've gone through and looked at the sheet that is in our packet, and I have a lot of issues with some of these numbers on here, um, with them. So it's, it's more or less, I want these, I want some of these line items justified. And they can't be justified, some of them, because they're general line items, not detailed line items. I know that's not our department, that's the sheriff's department. But that's the, that's one of the issues I have. So my thought is, along with what Chair has said, is to begin to pay these, these monies upon, monthly upon what we, those bills are. And not just give a blank check for that, for that, what, I'm sorry, what was the amount?
I said $7 million.
For that $7 million.
Commissioner Hammer?
Yeah, I have a question. Are you saying monthly from here to?
Yeah, we look at monthly.
Divide, divide seven up monthly.
What, what are the bills for April? We pay the bills for April.
And we look at everything from there.
We look at everything, but we just don't grant that $7 million upon approval of this.
He would need at least the $7 million to get him through April as well as pay the invoices that we already have in finance. He would need at least that amount. And that's not including any unforeseen civil service lawsuits that might be settled and have to come out of his salaries account.
Hey, you know, and explain that, please. When civil service lawsuits come up and they're granted, how does that take place?
When civil service lawsuits are, uh, are settled or resolved, if they need to come out of payroll, then they have to go through the payroll department and they're charged his regular salaries account along with the FICA and workers comp that are also a part of that settlement. If it is a final settlement and not through payroll where they're not receiving back pay, if it's a settlement that's receiving back pay, it's coming out of salaries. If it's just a flat settlement, like $50,000 for whatever damage or harm the plaintiff may have had, then that comes out of accounts payable and doesn't come through his salary account. But anything that comes through his salary account will need to be accounted for.
That's right. And, and the reason I ask that is because if, if there is a settlement that organically is going to possibly create a shortage in the salary account.
Correct.
Okay.
Are any other discussion at this time?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
So I had a question about how, how the calculation for the $14.6 million, that, did that come from the finance department?
Yes, it's a projection through the remainder of the fiscal year, based upon his current spend.
All right, and so I just want to make sure that I, that I'm understanding, because the current motion on the table is for a $7 million reduction, uh, which would look like, uh, providing $7 million to the sheriff's office. Um, but I want to make sure that I understand you when I, when I heard you say that it's, uh, what, $5 million per month of expenses through the rest of the fiscal year?
Basically, 5.71. And that's based upon, like I said, his current expense level. So if overtime should exceed where he is currently or his current spend, then that would kick it over more. If there are civil service lawsuits that are settled during this period of time, we can't anticipate those. So if they're settled through the Civil Service Board, then those would be additional costs to the sheriff's office.
Okay, and I, I just, I also want to make sure that I'm understanding. So the $14.6 million, that would be for, we're currently in April, May, and June. So the motion on the floor that will provide $7 million would require the sheriff's department to come back for the additional funding through the remainder of the fiscal year?
Yes, ma'am.
But these, the, all the amounts that we're discussing comes through the Board of Commissioners Finance Department, correct? The, 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 the projection of the amount for the expenses, the projection of how much would be needed to get the sheriff's department through the rest of the fiscal year? Like, all those projections, those numbers and calculations, they came from the Board of Commissioners Finance Department, correct?
Correct, they did.
Okay, so I just, I just want to make sure that I'm, that I'm understanding, because I, I hear there are questions around, um, accountability and access to the finances. But it sounds like because the finance department has the information to come up with those projections, we have the information for the sheriff's department's finances. Does that sound right?
I guess, I'm thinking, I'm not sure, because I can't speak on behalf of other commissioners. I think what they may be questioning is once the funds are awarded to the sheriff's office, I guess they're, the question is more so maybe. I don't want, like I said, I don't want to speak on your behalf, so maybe I should let you answer the question instead of speaking on your behalf.
You speaking?
Well, I'm just gonna say this, once we take the fund, once we send the funds over to the sheriff's office, the sheriff can do what he wants to do with those funds. We don't, we don't see the records, we don't see the documentation of any of that. That is why I'm asking for an audit, so we can actually see how the money is being spent and where it's going. And as, and, and I'm just, can I, I, I'm gonna break it down. If approved, I'm not opposed to providing more money to the sheriff's office, but it is conditioned on two things, ladies and gentlemen. First, the board needs to see records relating to overtime payments this calendar year. In May of 2023, the sheriff came to the board and asked for 25 additional deputies to provide an extra deputy in each courtroom and some extra manpower to bring down the backlog of serving eviction papers. At the time, the sheriff said he wanted 150 corrections officers, but had, but he had 120 corrections officers fully staffed. The board gave him eight more deputies than he asked for, a total of 33 deputies at the time. Later that year, in December of 2023, the sheriff came to the board and thanked us for providing him $5.2 million over his approved budget to fill the additional 33 deputy sheriff positions. That wasn't all the board provided at the time, because the board gave money towards cars, equipment, and other needs to equip those deputies. And at that time, the sheriff said that his office had 433 positions total with 420 filled. Out of that 433 positions, he said then that he only used five staff and 10 inmates to pick up trash. The board has not reduced his staffing levels since that time. Fast forward to our meeting on March 18th, the sheriff admitted that he was fully staffed, which suggests that all 433 positions are filled. So I did a little math. I believe that the county has about 20 judges total in all of our court levels. If there are three deputies per courtroom, that means 60 deputies are providing security inside our courtrooms and five more deputies to pick up trash. That's 65 people. But he still has only, he still only uses 120 correction officers to manage the jail. By my math, that means there are, there are still almost 250 employees of the sheriff's office that aren't guarding courtrooms, picking up trash, or working as correction officers. The sheriff asked the board to raise the citizen's mileage rate by two mils last meeting. Now, I wasn't saying to hurry up, but what I was saying is, we don't need to go up on taxes. I don't even want to consider that until I get information about what he's doing with the personal, with the person, with his personnel and the board has already give, that the board has already given him. The second thing, because I had to make sure, I wanted to make sure that the citizens heard me correctly. I want to see all of the bank records concerning the accounts he's holding. I've asked for them. I've done an open records request, and I still have not gotten them. Also, the county's independent auditors have been asking for this information for almost nine months. And the sheriff refuses to provide this information as preventing the county from being eligible for state grants this upcoming fiscal year. I want to know the full financial picture from the sheriff's office before the taxpayers are being asked to pay any more money. The board is responsible for managing the resources under its control, under its control. Once we give him that money, we don't know where it goes. So that's why we want to see where it goes. Also, I don't want to starve inmates, keep them from getting medical care, or leave the jail understaffed. What I do want, ladies and gentlemen, is for the sheriff to manage his budget. Manage his budget. And the personnel of this board has, and the personnel that this board has given him without, without continually draining the county's fund balance or forcing extra taxes on our citizens. We don't ha, we, we don't, we should not have to keep paying taxes. We should be able to see what's going on in that jail. And we are not gonna have a tax increase based on that jail. It is time for us to find out what's going on and move this county forward. And that's why I'm asking for an audit tonight, and that's why I'm asking, let's give him what he needs based on what they're saying from finance. And as, as he provides us for what, what we need to see, then we'll continue to provide him what he needs. But I'm not trying to take anything from the sheriff's office. I want our inmates to be taken care of, and I want things to be done decent and in order. And that's what we have to do. And so, whatever happened in the past, we're gonna move forward. But I wanted to give you the breakdown of that tonight. Board members, are there any other discussions at this time?
Yes, because, uh, I mean, there are a couple of items that I will want to address, because I, I didn't hear from the presentation last week about the sheriff asking for an increase in the, in the mileage rate, because that is a responsibility that the board has.
But he?
For increases in, in the, in the mileage rate. Uh, but I did, I did want to address, because, um, I, I heard you mention that, you know, the county should provide the amount that the, that the finance department has recommended for the sheriff's office, which is the 14.676 million dollars, because that's what I'm hearing from the, from the presentation. This isn't an amount that is coming from the sheriff's department. This is a projections that are coming from the finance department within the Board of Commissioners regarding where the sheriff's budget is currently, similar to the items that we have on the other parts of the agenda that says that there are recommendations for purchases and for other items that we do within the county. Even though the sheriff's department, it, excuse me, the sheriff's office, their funding comes from the Board of Commissioners, they are still a constitutional, off, off, they're a constitutional officer that is funded through the Board of Commissioners, the same way that we have departments within the Board of Commissioners that we also fund.
Chair? Madam Chair?
Yes.
And, and let's be clear, that, that, as two mils that we're speaking of was an estimated amount based upon the, um, proposed ask. That's what that was about. It wasn't an ask to increase that mileage rate two mils. Uh, yes, he's a constitutional officer of the state, and we must, um, give the budget appropriate needed. Yes, we do have to know, we need to know where this, these funds are going and how they're being dispersed and spent. But on top of that, what we need to do is, especially with the, with the temperament and climate that we have federally, not knowing what kind of grants are coming to the state and what's going on at the presidential level throughout all of our organizations, we need to be very cognizant and careful on how we move forward. And I, for me, going into this next fiscal year, I would like to see us begin to say, "Look, what are the constitutional duties of that officer?" And begin to fund those. Not any extra, um, other programs that that, that the sheriff has going on right now. I think we've got to begin to cut back, and I'm hoping we can get the sheriff to, to agree with that and say, "Look, we need to begin to cut in these appropriate areas, and let's begin to fund the const, begin to fund the constitutional duties of the sheriff, which is the courts, the jail, and serving warrants. Not cleaning roads, not anything else." We have, we have a, a now-certified chief of police and, and Clayton County Police Force that I think can step up and begin to handle our streets appropriately. I'm, and, and corrections as well. So I guess the question is, what is the motion that is currently on with what we had spoke about?
So the motion currently, um, on, on the floor is to, um, is?
Seven million.
To give him the $7 million also, um, including that as a forensic audit of the jail. And the, and start off with the $7 million. And then, as we see where he is, and we, um, speak back and forth with, um, with finance, we can, we can move from there and see, you know, where we need to go from there.
Okay, let me add, uh, Attorney Reed. Where do we stand legally in requesting a forensic audit from the sheriff's office? Can we do that? Is he, does he, must he? I know that the sheriff's office must conduct an audit. How often do they must conduct an audit?
Every county, um, every county entity has to provide an audit yearly.
Annually audit?
Yes, and I believe, and I think finance can correct me if I'm wrong, that the, the documents that are, that haven't been provided are from the 2024, June 2024 audit.
Okay.
And so that's what I believe that Madam Chair was referring to, um, that, that audit has not been turned over to the state.
Okay.
And that is what's jeopardizing the county's ability to get state grants.
How do we get that audit?
It's already done, it's just we're waiting for him to provide it.
For him to provide it, okay.
The, the information.
So, so my other question is, because that's just a normal audit, that is not a forensic audit.
Correct.
So the, and we, let's go further. Can we actually ask for a forensic, since we already have the audit here? That just has not been released yet.
Sure.
I mean, we can ask, but is he liable to, is he mandated to produce, produce that?
The board is the ultimate, um, the ultimate, uh, I guess keeper of public funds. So every entity, as Commissioner Allen, I mean, sorry, Commissioner Reeves stated, the board is who provides funding to all county officers or constitutional officers.
All right, I guess, one last question is more or less to, uh, the chairwoman. Can we amend to begin to ask for that audit rather than a new forensic audit, which would take an immense amount of time? But ask for that audit that was already done? which would take an immense amount of time, but ask for that audit that was already done?
Can I just say this? I think we need both. Um, I, so how I found out about the, the, the other audit is because the delegation, um, said that we weren't going to be getting our funding.
Correct.
And that we were at the, at, at the point that we were going to start getting, um, getting, uh, it was going to be cut. So for our, for, um, for the different funding that we were getting. So I think we need both. We need, because that audit is not going to go into detail, the detail that I think that we need as a board.
I understand, but to do a forensic audit, we're not going to get that until basically the end of twenty twenty-five or beginning of twenty twenty-six.
May I say something?
Yes.
Commissioner.
Uh, since there is a question regarding whether or not it's a forensic audit, why don't we, uh, do the seven million? And we have an audit department. Why don't we do the audit?
Okay.
No. And it won't take as long as a forensic audit, and then if there are questions after, but at least it will be an audit.
Do we have anybody even qualified to do forensic audits?
You had Stacy headed up that department.
But that's a different, that's a whole, the forensic audit is whole different from a regular audit.
No, is, is that the same?
A forensic audit is, is much more detailed.
Correct.
Uh, than the audit department that we have now.
Our current internal audit department, they focus on whatever area you tell them to. So if you, as the board, told them to focus on overtime, for example, or to focus on whatever, then they would go inside that department and focus on that particular area and provide your report after they perform the audit. Well, that, that's what I would suggest for now, do, do, use our department, not any extra funds, which a forensic audit would, um, we would have to provide other funds for that. Use what we have, which is an internal audit that's very capable of doing what we're asking now. I'm, I'm not saying. I'm looking at you all, but I'm. That, that's a recommendation that we can have.
And if we need to go.
Your, but your, uh, motion said forensic.
Correct.
So why don't we say the internal audit?
That's fine.
Well, and the release of the audit that has already been completed.
Right, because if we are missing grants, I didn't know that.
That will give us some historical data moving forward. So I think we want to receive that audit.
Commissioner Reeves.
Thank you. So I, I have some follow-up, I have some follow-up questions. So, uh, this is, this is the first I'm hearing about, um, grants being held up because of, of a. Can you, can you explain what part or what departments are waiting on to receive from the sheriff's office that is causing a halt in, in state, state, state grants? And, um, why wasn't it communicated to the board previously?
The sheriff's office has other bank accounts that are not controlled by finance. So each year, our external auditors ask for those reconciliations, those bank accounts, those statements, so that we can reconcile the accounts, make sure that all the checks written were written for eligible purposes, um, by law. And he did not turn over some of those accounts to the auditors. The reason the auditors knew they existed, because they were in the prior audit. So when they didn't receive them this time, they requested that information, and they have not received that yet.
Is that a requirement from the state surrounding the?
Yes.
Yes, and, and so, like I said, the delegation, I had a meeting, um, with the, with our delegation chair, and that's when it was brought to my attention as well. So that's why I wanted to make sure that we were very specific, and just as Commissioner Hamburg said, um, you know, I'll change my motion to, um, to the, since you said you, it would be those missed, those bank accounts, all of that, you all will be getting that as well, is that correct? What were the things that?
If he remits those to us.
Okay.
We can't just go inside of his.
So that's where, that's where we need to.
So, but a follow-up question. So if we, we have an internal audit department, um, I understand that this motion is requesting an audit of the sheriff's department, but it sounds like we have always had the capacity to do a audit, because we have a department that has the, that we, we have within our depart, our finance team, the ability to audit the budget.
Yeah, but the thing is, if you're not getting that information, then how can you audit the budget?
But we have the finances, because the, the finance department has the, the finances. That's how they were able to come up with the calculations and projections.
We don't have all of the bank accounts. The external auditors require access to all bank accounts. The sheriff maintains several bank accounts out of the sheriff's office that finance does not have access to unless they're turned over to finance.
Okay.
And we don't, so we don't have those currently, but auditors were not given those.
But how, how are, I, I understand that there are separate bank accounts, but how are those? Give me, give me a second, come, come back to me.
Madam Chair, I have a, I have a question. The, the accounts in question are taxpayer dollars in those accounts.
I'm not sure, because I haven't seen those statements.
So the other, so the sheriff's office has the account that you guys fund, and the sheriff's office has a separate account, the, the account you guys are asking for. You guys aren't sure if taxpayer dollars are in there or not?
He has multiple accounts.
Multiple accounts.
Correct.
So the ones that you guys don't have, do they have taxpayer dollars in it? Or are these other sources of revenue that the sheriff has sought out to make money to bring into the jail?
Some of those funds are sheriff's service fees that are supposed to be remitted to finance, but because I cannot see those statements and have not seen those statements, I don't know what all of the revenue sources are for those accounts without having seen them. But it's a requirement to the state auditors that they see it all in order for there not to be a finding on the Clayton County audit regarding not being, not having access to those funds.
And you guys have audited them in the past?
Yes, at least the ones that we are aware of, we have audited in the past. As they, as we gain knowledge of them, then we request them, or the auditors request them, I should say.
So what happens, um, if the sheriff decides not to give the, the extra bank accounts that you guys are requesting?
Um, Clayton County will receive a finding on this year's audit, and I'm not sure how intense, because you have findings, you have material weaknesses, you have different levels of findings that you can be given by the auditors. So I'm not sure at this point what that finding will be, but due to the delay of the audit, that's.
It's just, so it's just twenty twenty-four, so he gave them in twenty twenty-three, just not in twenty twenty-four?
Correct, from my knowledge, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner. With us being deemed, I guess you call it, and not being able to get grants from here on, we're out of compliance, right? Now, how does that affect our accreditation when Moody's and these other accrediting agencies come? How does that affect us? Because we've, in the past, we've been getting, what, double A, whatever, and we've been able to, I guess, borrow money at a better, uh, rate and all that, so does this affect?
Usually, they assess our bond rating when we request more bonds, and then we'll have a rating call, and they will definitely ask about that. They'll ask about findings and what the solution has been to the finding, because usually if you get a finding, then you have to give a comment back to the state telling them how you're going to fix that finding, or how you're going to fix the issue going forward. So you have to respond to those questions.
So they do look at that?
Yes.
So do y'all want me, with my motion? Do you want me to do, we, we'll continue the motion to amend the budget, um, to give the sheriff a total of seven million dollars and a internal audit?
Audit by the internal audit department?
An audit by the internal audit department.
But I also would like in there that we received that last audit as well.
Okay.
So you'd have to amend that, because you made the motion.
Okay, so I'll amend the motion. The motion is, I would like to amend the motion to, uh, for, to provide the sheriff's office with seven million dollars, and you said a audit, you want the internal audit and the one in the year before that as well.
And to receive.
And to receive, uh, and to receive the.
The last audit, correct.
Okay, and to receive the internal audit for twenty.
The audit, that, that's not, that's not our department, that's the state, right?
It's not the state, it's our external auditors. We have external auditors that come in every year.
Right.
So we've been working on that audit, but we were waiting on documentation from the sheriff's office regarding those accounts, so that we can close out that audit.
Okay, but I just wanted the motion to be correct.
Okay.
So we'll be doing an internal audit, but then we also want to receive the twenty-four audit.
The documentation.
The documentation.
Which, which would put us in compliance once we see, or once the state receives.
And once we final, once our external auditors finalize that audit, um, yes.
So the, the motion is to, again, to, 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 for the seven million dollars to do, also to do the internal audit and to receive the internal audit.
Uh, take internal out, the second.
Okay, to receive the audit.
Right.
Okay, and to receive the audit, um, from the sheriff's office from twenty twenty-four.
The, an internal audit department will also need a focus. Do you know now what you would like them to focus on within that department?
Do we have to put that in the motion, or can we just?
You can discuss that later. I just didn't know if you knew already.
All right, uh, Commissioner Allen.
Question, the, the missing document from twenty twenty-four is the bank accounts outside of what the county controls, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So hypothetically speaking, if this is approved, the sheriff is still not obligated to give those, give that bank account?
If, if he does not, there will be a finding on the county that lists the sheriff is not, is not complying with the request.
So even if the board decides to approve this, if the sheriff still decides that he doesn't want to give the bank account, then?
We'd still be out of compliance.
The county would be out of compliance.
Or either we do the internal audit.
Yes, as far as I'm aware.
It's just, I'm just trying to work and figure out how can we get the sheriff to give that with the relationship being so torn now? If he gave it in twenty twenty-three, you know, with no problem, now giving it now, so I'm just, that's all. Thank you, no more questions.
And then also, I believe that the, uh, the chair's motion is that at some point he'll have to come back to the board to receive additional money. And so if at that time he chooses not to have provided additional money so that the board can understand where it is, then I don't know, it'll, I don't know what the status will be at that time.
Thank you, that makes sense.
I have a question in a corner, but were you acknowledging?
No.
Okay, uh, so just, just two questions, just so I can have a better understanding. So because the, we have, the county has internal audits within the finance department, we, the, the county has the ability to request an audit of the sheriff's budget, regardless of whether it's contingent on the motion for the seven million dollars and a financial audit. Is that, is that correct? Like, those two are not mutually exclusive. It's seven million dollars projected, seven, oh, sorry. The request, or rather, the projected amount to fund the sheriff's office is the fourteen. The motion on the table is for seven million in addition to a financial audit. But because the audit request will be done internally, those are two separate items. Is that, is, am I, am I understanding that correctly? There, it is not contingent on, on, okay, I just want to make sure that, that I understood that correctly.
I believe you are correct in that these two items are not, um, they are not necessarily tied together, but the chair's motion is that they're tied together. So I'm giving, so I believe that the chair was saying that she was making seven, and the condition of the seven is these other two things.
I have a, I think it's an agenda-setting question around policy. So when we received the agenda, this item was on the consent agenda. Are there any, I don't know if that was be something in an ordinance or a resolution regarding what types of policies can be placed on the consent agenda? Because either way, this is either a seven million dollar request or a fourteen million dollar request, and there's a lot of discussion, however it was listed on the consent agenda.
Typically, um, in the agenda meeting, um, the, the items that are on consent agenda are discussed at that time. It's the things that are placed there, and, and things that are on the regular agenda are placed there. So there is a policy that governs that, but that at any time, if there's an item that is on the consent, needs to be moved to regular. That's why it made it so much easier for the board, did not have to get a second. Any commissioner can move any item at any time. So if for some reason the item that should have been on the regular agenda was inadvertently listed on the consent, it can come off consent to go to the regular agenda with just one commissioner making that request.
Outside of this motion, I'd love to talk about proposals on what items shouldn't, shouldn't be included on the consent agenda. I don't, I don't have any additional questions.
Any other questions at this time?
No.
All right, are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed?
No.
Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Please state your reason for abstention.
Not enough information.
All right, the ayes have it, and the motion passes, thank you. All right, item thirteen.
Item thirteen is Resolution twenty twenty-five sixty-one, a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Jonesboro for the billing and collection of certain avalorum taxes by the Clayton County Tax Commissioner, to authorize the chairwoman to execute the agreement and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary, to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense relating thereto, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
All right, board members, um, I need a motion at this time.
Some of.
All right, I second it, all right, is there any discussion?
Oh, yes, I just, I had some questions around, um, the, the purpose of this resolution. Is this something that is conducted with all of the cities within Clayton County? I saw that it's for, I'm not sure if that's a question for the tax commissioner, but I was just curious.
Um, I can provide something as she, okay. So it is by municipality. Each municipality can determine whether they would like the tax commissioner to collect taxes. This particular, uh, agreement is the same as that of Morrow. So, um, it's just that the city of Jonesboro has asked for the tax commissioner to collect taxes for the city.
Is that for an annual basis? Is this a one-time, um, IGA, just?
It, it, well, it's one time, but the IGA is for fifty years.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions at, at this time, board members? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. All right, next is item number fifteen.
Item fifteen is Resolution twenty twenty-five sixty-three, which is a resolution to establish a budget committee to assist the budget officer in preparation of the annual county budget, to authorize the budget committee to perform all acts necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date, and for other purposes.
All right, can I get a motion on the floor?
Sorry?
I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-three.
Second.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion at this time?
Uh, yes. I'm a bit confused. On last business meeting, we took away the ability for the chairperson, chairwoman, to be on the budget committee, really, to head the budget committee, which is what is stated, uh, with Georgia laws, OCGA. I'm trying to remember, was it thirty-six?
OCGA, thirty-six dash eighty-one dash four.
Right, four C. And all, and now we want to put her back? So what's going on?
Well, I'd just like to say this, for the last twenty-five years, um, ladies and gentlemen, the board has followed the state law, thirty-six dash eighty-one, eighty-one, eighty-one dash four C. And the board has allowed the chairperson to perform the duties and responsibilities of doing the budget. I will not be a part of this change, I choose not to. And so, I, I don't, I know Commissioner Allen has chosen to bring this, and, uh, I don't want to participate anymore. I'm going to continue to watch this budget like I, like I'm supposed to, and I'm going to focus on making sure that the taxes of the citizens are not increased. So that's my statement, and that's where I'm going, and again, I choose not to be a part of this.
Okay, in that case, now, I, I've been on this board too long for us to not have the budget done and done on time. That's another penalty and all. If we aren't done by, I believe, um, is it June thirtieth? And the new budget, the new fiscal year starts July one. So we need to have something in place.
So we need to have something in place to get this budget done and done correctly. Now, in the past, the chairperson would do, would do the budget and the other commissioners would get a chance to see it and look at it and make whatever changes, uh, deemed necessary, or what they would request anyway. So now we need somebody to do this budget. And I'm hearing that it's not going to be, well, well, no, I do, well, we could do this. Why don't we, um, whatever that, um, resolution was done last time? Undo it? And put it back like, like the, like the state, uh, asked all of us, all the counties to do and, and abide by the state law.
I'll just say simply, there are several counties then that are, um, going against that OCGA because they have budget committees currently, and they've had them for several years now moving forward, with their chair or CEO and a committee to begin to go ahead and assess and analyze and prepare a budget.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Why don't you volunteer, oh, uh, voluntold to be on the committee? And you and the vice chair, because we need to get this done.
I think there is, well, we can have somebody, a designate of the board. I mean, granted, but I think I would not remove that, that chair from being there.
Well, would you like to serve?
I would say, let's, we, if we have a, if we have a statement in there about a designate from the board, I could be the designate. I don't mind being the designate.
Yeah.
But it would be open for all.
Well, we'll see where this motion goes.
Well, I just want to say this, I've already been removed, so that's fine. And Chairman Turner was not removed from doing this, so that is not true. So again, I've been removed and so I'm good with that. So if the board, whatever the board's pleasure is to have whoever they want to, I'm fine with that as well. So we can move forward, however they want, however the board wants to vote, however we want to vote. But again, I've been removed already, so I'm, I'm, I'm pleased with that.
Okay, in that case, Mr. Reed, where does this, um, motion go?
We have a motion on the floor.
That's why I'm asking, what, what, where does this motion go?
There needs to be a vote.
Okay.
I have a.
Commissioner Reed?
Well, was Commissioner Hambrich, I didn't want to interrupt. Mm-hmm, I'm done.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am. All right, so I just, I wanted to make sure, because my understanding of the resolution, um, last week, there was a resolution around, um, removing the sole initiation of the budget process, uh, from the chair. And it's my understanding that this resolution expands the access for the initial budget process to an additional member of the Board of Commissioners. And so it's listed that it would be the chair and, and the vice chair, which we learned upon my appointment to vice chair is, is rotating. So this resolution would allow at any, on any given year, the chairperson and the current vice chair, the opportunity to, to review the initial budget. So it would rotate between each commissioner. But there's also, as, as Commissioner Davis mentioned, there's also language in here that mentions it's designate. So my understanding is that this resolution expands the initial budgeting process from one sole commissioner to multiple commissioners. Is that, is that a correct assessment?
Uh, I think that's fair. You could, because initially the, uh, first, uh, the initial state law allows the chair or the state law allows an executive to, uh, provide the initial budgetary policymaking decision. And this resolution, if passed, would expand that initial policymaking, uh, determination to the chair and the vice chair.
And I just, I looked up the, the OCCGA and I know, um, OCCGA 36 dash 81 dash 4A is mentioned, but under OCCGA 36 dash 81 for sub, it, you know, you know the, the law, but it, it talks about, you know, in, in those units of local government in which there is no budget officer, the governing authority shall, uh, shall perform all duties, uh, of the budget officer. So this is a resolution that would just, that, this state law allows for local counties or municipalities to create the budget policy that, or the, excuse me, not policy, the budget procedures that work best for their individual counties. So the state law doesn't dictate that it's which designate will initiate the budget policy. I just want to confirm that.
Okay, you're asking me whether this particular resolution is in line with state law?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I have one more, I have one more question. So I should have wrote it down. One more question for your attorney. Okay, so this resolution, does it, um, does it impede or require the board to start the budget process over?
No.
Thank you.
Are you ready for the vote?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. All right, the ayes have it and the motion passes. Again, I will not be serving on the budget committee, thank you.
Madam Chair, madam chair, who, who did the nay?
It was Commissioner Hambrich and I.
Thank you.
I, I do have a question, Attorney Reed. So where, where does the budget process go now?
So my understanding, I believe that there are three other departments that have not yet met with, um, the budget officer. And so, uh, I believe that, it's, it, okay, well, there are several departments that have yet to meet with the budget officer. And so once the budget officer schedules that, then whoever will be sitting as part of the budget committee can either coordinate with the budget officer for times for when they will be available or they can, uh, you know, that's kind of up to whatever the budget committee, um, determines.
Budget committee?
Yes, as of.
Is the committee one?
I'm sorry.
Right now, it's a committee of one.
It's a committee of the chairperson, vice chair, or their designate. So then there will be a designate?
So they can, the, the board can decide, Commissioner Allen, the three that voted yes, whoever they want to go from there. All right, are y'all ready to move on?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next we will go into, um, item 17 for appointment, Parks and Recreation. Carlos Frazier has been removed from the Clayton County Advisory Board for, for Parks and Recreation per Resolution 2025 dash 64. The existing term will expire on June 30th of 2025. Does anyone, anyone have anybody to?
Ma, madam chair, before that, um, this actually is the Parks and Rec recommendation that needs to be approved through the Board of Commissioners.
Oh, that resolution, I'm sorry, I got, I'm sorry, I missed 16.
And for record, that name is, sorry, one second.
Well, we got to remove, remove him first, so let's go to, let's go to 16, I'm sorry. Um, on item 16, I, I'll go and read it. Resolution 2025 dash 64, resolution authorizing the Clayton County Board of Commissioners to order the removal of Carlos Frazier from the Clayton County Advisory Board for Parks and Recreation to authorize the chairwoman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish of the intent of this resolution to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. All right, can I get a motion?
So move.
All right, second.
Second.
Any discussion at this time? Any discussion at this time, board members? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next, number 17, board appointment, Parks and Recreation. Carlos Frazier has been removed from the Clayton County Advisory Board for Parks and Recreation per Resolution 2025 dash 64. The existing term will expire on June 30th of 2025. Does anyone have, do, do you all have anyone that you would like to appoint for this position at this time?
This is the question, like, please send someone?
Yes, the Parks and Rec.
Madam Chair, the recommendation is Tamika Fortney Reed.
Okay, Tamika Fortney Reed. All right, I made the motion that we accept the recommendation for Tamika, you said Courtney Reed?
Fortney with an F.
Reed. All right, can I get a second on that?
Second?
All right, any discussion at this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next will be number 18, board appointment to the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority Citizens Advisory Board. Um, Commissioner Allen, what is your pleasure?
I would like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Rochelle Osborne to the Martyr Board.
Okay, I second that motion. Is there any discussion at this time? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Item number 19, board appointment, Metropo, Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority Citizens Advisory Board. And that is from District 3 again.
Um, I would like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Louise Hunter.
I second that motion, all right. Is there any discussion at this time, board members? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next is a board appointment to the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority Citizens Advisory Board. And Commissioner Reeves, what is your pleasure?
I'd like to table items, uh, 20 and 21 and hold them until the May meeting.
May, okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves, is that the first meeting in May?
Uh, yes.
What's that date?
Thank you.
All right, make sure y'all.
That is going to be May 6th.
May 6th, all right, thank you. All right, next is item number 22. That is the board appointment for the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority Board. And that is for, um, for me, I'm going to also table mine until the next board meeting in April.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep, all right. Mr. Reed, is there a need for executive session at this time?
No, I'm sorry, it's April 14th.
This means it's adjourned.
Uh, executive session for litigation. Litigation only.
Oh, great.
Personnel.
And personnel.
All right, at this time, I need a motion to go into executive session for litigation and personnel.
So move.
All right, back in a second.
Second.
All right, any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes, thank you. All right, I need a motion to return into executive session.
Motion to reconvene.
I mean reconvene, all right, all in favor say aye.
Second.
Aye, aye, all opposed?
Second, second.
I need a second, I was trying to go, all right, all opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, y'all say it and the motion pass. All right, is there anything else? Nothing else? All right, this meeting is.
Motion.
I need a motion to, uh, to adjourn the meeting, I'm tired.
So move.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, this meeting is adjourned, 8:30 now.